Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to our regular city council meeting. Five twenty-eight, twenty-four at six oh eight PM. I'll take roll call. Councillor Potvin.
Here.
Mayor Smith, here. Councillor Polis.
Here.
Councillor Skinsitch.
Here.
Also present is interim clerk Mike Skurvik, attorney Colleen Kuslucher, chief teacher, and, I wrote it down.
Ellie.
From SEH, and Wendy. And we do have a quorum. And if everybody would please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And we do have one addition from the working session, correct? And that would be to, for the motion for the law property to direct the city attorney to look into the ownership to send a letter, correct?
Sure. I'll move.
Moved by councillor Polis.
A second.
Supported by councillor Skinsitch. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And that old business since we had that discussion?
I'll put under new business.
New business?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. City council minutes, invoices from previously approved projects, the boards and commission minutes, payments of bills, payroll upon proper audit of clerk and mayor, and application for 3rd of July liquor permit, fire relief.
I'll move on. Or?
Moved by councillor Skinsitch, supported by councillor Polis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And do we have any public input tonight?
I had a request from a couple of members of the public to thank Sam and his crew for the work they did on the 4th of July banners.
Thank you. Any further public input?
Did anybody say anything about the gazebo? I thought they did a very nice job about that.
Yes.
Did anybody, did we thank?
Nope, we haven't. And Paul, this was just for the flowers? You didn't?
This was just the flowers.
Okay. Dylan, do you know who?
Well, I did the upper part of the gazebo, and then Lois Archibald and three other volunteers did the memorials up front and then columns and the flag.
Okay.
They have their posts on Facebook representing the team that did the lower part of the gazebo.
Yeah, I saw that, and I didn't write the names down. I was hoping you had them, but thank you. No, I'll acknowledge that is, no further public input? Then we'll move on to the reports from mayor and council, and that's what I would like to add is thanking Dylan and the parties that did help decorate the gazebo. It looks really nice. It's nice to see that lit up and decorated. Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank Paul Skurvik, Paisley Mitchell, Brandon Mitchell, and Gina Costello for decorating flowerpots. They've got the plants planted, and as always, they look fabulous. Really spruces up Broadway Street in the summer. Thank you. And that's all I have. Councillor Potvin?
Well, this is a subject that was brought up a couple of times, both those windows across the street on Sam's office. I know we approved them to be changed at least twice in the last four years, and still not changed, so I think, can we bring it up again to have Sam get some quotes to get those windows changed? You know? Remind him of it again because it's been, you know, four years at least. It would sure make it look a lot nicer. It looks so dumpy over there now. Doesn't even look, it looks like a rundown building that's not even used. I mean, I think we should take a little pride in our buildings, and that would be a good place to start. Put up some windows and inside, you know, dressing whatever, shades or whatever to beautify it, and then maybe do a little paint underneath the windows, that piece that's there, clean it up and just beautify it because it's going to be sitting right next to a brand-new building here probably by the end of summer, so I think we should make that one look nice to us.
Now, I, I know Mike and I had commented on the side of the building. It'd be nice to have some paint.
Spray painted or whatever.
Spruce that up. It would look nice.
So I don't know if we have to.
Not to Sam.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we have money in the budget.
Yeah, I think there'd be enough for that, yeah.
What were the doors on that building? Would it be worth doing doors and windows?
Maybe, I don't even know the condition of the doors. Maybe a paint job for now, you know, until, see what's there.
If he gets a quote, I can have him bid that separately, and then it can come in front of the council for consideration if you want to move forward with it.
Right, yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Polis?
I've just got two things. One is a reminder that the bolt launch for Orby Don is supposed to be closed, so please do not remove the signs or the barricades because it's at your own risk that there's a big drop-off and something dangerous could happen. The other thing is filing for candidacy for either mayor or council, I believe, ends on June 4th, so if you're going to file, you gotta, it's coming up soon. That's really all I got.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsitch?
Uh, two things, I guess. I heard a lot of compliments on the cemetery at the program for Memorial Day yesterday, so I thanked the city crew and everybody that, VFW, that put on the program up there. Sounded like it was a really nice program up there. And the other thing, too, we started using the disc golf up at Hopkins Park this year. There's nine holes through that park right now, and asking, talking to some neighbors, I've got some relatives that live right up there, my uncle, and they said there's cars pretty constant there with people using that. So I know part of that plan, I think that was with the first nine, they had an additional nine, just something to throw out there if we, at some point, want to put the additional nine on there, because it sounds like it's being pretty well-used, and that's great for more people to be using that park. And former clerk Jill had said that Giant's Ridge, if we went with the eighteen, would be looking at pairing up and doing some sort of tournaments or some kind of thing like that, too. So I think that would be neat, too, if we can move that way. Otherwise, that's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Was there a design for another nine somewhere?
Yeah, there was, there was eighteen holes total, and I don't, I thought I had the plan. I can't find it, but I know Jill had it, had one, and they were up, the other nine were above, was, was up above the fence, kind of around the buildings up there through the woods and stuff, and there wasn't much for cutting, because I think a lot of the lanes were already kind of there with just the way it is up there. But I don't, I don't have that drawing anymore, that, that plan that they had. Maybe, maybe you've got it somewhere down here somewhere.
Well, I will look diligently for it.
But maybe it's something we want to move forward with. That's all.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports from staff, boards, and commissions.
Good evening, Paul. I did see on the agenda that you put, put it down below, so I wonder if we can bump that up to this session or to this spot. It was for a DNR grant that I'd like approval to apply for. It's an annual fifty-fifty grant, up to $5,000. I do budget for it every year. It seems like it's an every-other-year deal where you get it. So we're looking at this year, if we got it, getting four nozzles to equip with the new ladder. We did not get back then because we just didn't want to ask for any more money back on the truck game, so we figured we could wait for a while, so this is a good spot for that. And a little bit of other, other gear to add up to the five grand, so looking for approval on that.
I'll move.
That's, that's under new business if you want to wait till we get there, or you can approve it now?
We'll just do it now.
Sure, let's go for it.
A second.
Moved by councillor Polis, supported by councillor Skinsitch. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero.
All right. And then I just wanted to give you guys an update. It's been a while since I've been here at, at the meeting. I apologize for that. Work life's been busy. But we're currently sitting at twenty-two members on our department. Three of the five new ones have, are at class tonight. They have one more class after this, and then their final exam, and they will be completely qualified as firefighters. They got through it really quick. The last two, we're hoping that class opens up here in September, so we're sitting really good compared to a lot of the other departments around, which is nice to see, because for many years, we were one of the lower-membered departments, so that's, that's really good. Our participation level is the best it's been in quite a few years on, on firefighters per call. I think we're sitting at close to eight per call, so that's, that's great. We've, we're kind, we've been busy this year. We usually average around fifty, fifty-five calls a year, and we're sitting at twenty-four page calls already this year. Nine of them, structure fires, one wildland fire, one vehicle fire, and thirteen miscellaneous, them being four smoke-in-the-area-or-outside fires, power line down, couple CO alarms, smoke alarm, three traffic accidents, a water main break, and most recently, water rescue. So, been busy. Doing some, right now, we're, we're getting ready for our big event on the 3rd of July, so 3rd of July parade, we have our annual Polish sale in beverages, so, and I believe that was going to get, hopefully get approved tonight for that license, and just wanted to make sure that was, you did, that was for the 3rd of July and also for the 19th and the 20th for the call for the cure. So we got that coming up, too. On that note, I did talk to Jeff Ward here not long ago. He is going to come up for the 3rd of July with that Jeep that they're raffling it off, have it parked in front of the Fire Hall Police Station there for a night and selling raffle tickets, so. So yeah, that's all I have. You guys have anything for me?
Yeah, I've got one thing. Jeremy brought up a good point, is with the, the water being down on Orby Don and stuff, you guys might have struggled to get the boat in there for the rescue. Is there any suggestions you got that might help?
Well, I was just talking with chief teacher about that before the meeting. That, that call was pretty, I was pretty impressed with our department. Sammy, having access, being the public works director, key to the arena, he went directly to the arena, grabbed the wheeler, grabbed that boat, went down to the boat landing quick. When I got on scene, I ended up going on the end of Michigan where, where they were climbing up the hill, and Chelsea, Lieutenant, was it Lieutenant or Sergeant? Lieutenant Tricano pulled up just in time with one of the razors, and I was able to jump in with her, and her and I were able to get in there and, and get to the, to the gentleman. Thankfully, it wasn't, it didn't turn out to be a water rescue. He was just out there fetching his sister's boat, but the way it looked, someone was in the water and not coming back up, so. But yes, we are actually, our, our training on next Monday is going to be just that. We're going to do it again. We're going to suit up in our suits and go out as an actual rescue also, so.
Okay.
But yes, pulling that boat out, out of the, down there was a struggle. It took many, with the four-wheeler, a truck would never, your truck's going to end up in the water. It's so steep right now, but that four-wheeler, we had to have a few people sitting on the front and a couple pushing just to get that little boat out of there, so. So what you brought up, I wouldn't suggest having anyone land boats down there.
Yeah, I'll make a suggestion that you can maybe look at is where the beach is now, where the water, where that dive platform is. See if you can't la, launch the boat there with the wheeler.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I would try that. I think that would work.
It's deep pretty quick and...
Yeah, thank you.
That might be, if we have to get you in there, you got to get in there.
Yeah, and we did have Anoka Rescue up here, Ty?
Anoka.
Recently, and, yeah, we were able to assist with them with our, with our breathable air tanks in there to help them out, fill up their tanks, so.
Good.
I think Ty called me up to make sure it was all right, and yeah, absolutely, that's what that's there for, our fill-in us and fill-in them. We want them to come back, so.
And I would like to thank you for your quick efforts that day because the camper who was witnessing it was very scared, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
No. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you all. I have to go to a county chief's meeting, so sorry to bump out of your...
No, that's all right. Attorney Kuslucher?
Good evening, mayor council. I don't have a formal report this evening. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Chief teacher?
Good evening, mayor council. Report is this weekend was a rather busy weekend. There were some, I do not have Facebook, but several people pointed out to me that there were some complaints this weekend about ATV traffic in, in law enforcement, specifically the Gilbert Police Department stopping just Gilbert citizens for these violations. Since Friday, ninety-one traffic stops. Ninety-one traffic stops on ATVs. Of the ninety-one traffic stops, three were Gilbert citizens and two were BIWABIC citizens. The rest were from out of the area, so I guess I do not have Facebook, but... Anyways, so, if you can pass that along, that's, you see violation stop, and ninety-one traffic stops, a lot of traffic stops on ATVs. Especially, we also, when we do our stuff, part of the grant is we keep track of the ATVs, and over the entire weekend, we saw six hundred. So basically, we stopped one of the six hundred ATV, or we stopped six, or ninety-one of six hundred ATVs, so it's about one every six or so. We issued only three citations. We made one narcotics arrest on the ATVs, and again, like I said, three were for Gilbert citizens, two were BIWABIC citizens, and none of the Gilbert BIWABIC citizens received citations. So, and that was on top of eighty-three other calls for service since Friday, so it was a pretty busy weekend, so. That's all I have.
So is it for speed mainly? Why are you stopping?
Um, the, probably about half. Half was speed, other was, like, we had several stops on Highway ninety-seven for, under the county ordinance, you can operate the ATV on a county road, however, you have to be on the rightmost portion of the roadway, and several ATVs were running right down the center line or run down the traffic lane. So we stopped those, and I gave the exact numbers once I could tell you, but that was a lot of violations, was the county road violation, ninety-seven, speed down by the campground, ten miles an hour, speed there, speed down by the, by the car wash, we had a, I think we had a half dozen stops by the car wash. We also had several stops, super awesome, up by the Holiday Station, people not taking their approach, running up Dakota Avenue, cutting across some, so kind of a mixture of them. The fastest one we had, I think, violation, whether, I think it was fifty-nine or forty, but it transitioned from a fifty zone, so they did not receive citations, so for the most part, we were pretty, I think we were pretty, trying to do the education thing, and we were out there, like I said, I think we had somebody generally stationed in town at all times. There was also two crashes out of the HP park also, one resulted in minor injuries that are unknown, so.
Any load pipe citation?
You know, ironically, I can tell you this, the last two, three years, most of the ATVs now, because of how they're tuned, they're not, they're not as bad as they used to be. Even dirt bikes now, with the way they're tuned, it's not worth putting a load pipe on it because it causes all the computer system to kind of shut it down, actually dispower, so we didn't have that many of that. And again, that was just very easy. Truck traffic, that's a whole different thing as far as load exhaust. We had stopped in this weekend because obviously we had eighty-four calls, those nine were traffic stops, but that's been one of my pet peeves this last couple of years with load exhaust on vehicles, so we've been trying to address that, but there was a certain residents on Highway ninety-seven that we made a couple arrests out of already, and I think that's probably tamed down some issues for some of the consistent load exhaust.
How about the Jake Brake signage? Did you get any signage?
Yeah, the brake sign is on. The only issue is the one in ninety-seven, I believe Sam was working with the county engineer, they would not allow us to put it on a speed limit sign, so they're going to have to put a separate post in and put it in there, so. I don't know what the reason was for that, but that was what the county told us, so. Now that is a blast week, late last week, so.
So we have to put them up then?
In order to enforce the ordinance, we have to have a sign up there.
But you can't give them to the county and have them put them in because they're all set up for putting down signs?
The county has to put them in because it's on the road.
Oh, so they do put them in? You just give them the sign?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have. Those are the questions.
Anything with the siren?
I do not know.
Keep up the good work. And we'll move on to Ellie with SEH. Did you have something for us tonight?
No formal report tonight, but open any questions you guys might have.
Council have any questions for SEH? For Ellie? Thank you.
I was just curious about that access for Dollar General. If that doesn't go through, is any change is going to be made down there? If that store doesn't, or is it going to kind of stay the same? Because wasn't kind of mainly to provide access to that store was part of that?
I guess I'm not following for...
That road access that you were going to do? You had the DNR there, you had...
Oh, that was for the ATV.
But wasn't that road also going to be used to access Dollar General?
No, no. That, that'll be totally separate.
Oh, okay.
Totally separate. I believe the road for Dollar General is going to be that alleyway, I guess, that's right before the property. You've got the edge, the trail.
Yeah.
Then there's that paved alleyway. That'll be the access.
Is that on the other side, that trail?
Of the trail, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's probably twenty feet.
Oh, okay.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Is what their entrance was.
I see, okay.
Any further discussion? Thanks. We'll move, uh, move on to the campground. Oldst Wendy?
Good evening, everybody. We had a busy weekend, and it was full, and we were able to take in just about $10,000 last week, so that was a really good weekend. We have been hitting this on the mowing between all the ring, we do a few in, in between the sprinkles, but we're trying to keep up on that. We did plant seventeen trees. We, Sam gave me approval to spend $250 on trees, but that got me two big, one service berry, one red maple, and three small pines. The rest, we went out in the woods and dug up and planted, and we planted two, more red pines, and the rest were all, or red maples and the rest were all pines that we dug out of the woods. So we're, we've been trying to put a, a line across the Lakeview area to kind of sort of grow up and kind of prevent the constant wind that comes up there. They'll still have a good view, but they'll have a few trees, which they didn't have any trees in there. We are going to go plant some more trees. Sam told me about a place north of town. He said back in the woods there, there was all kinds of pine, so we're going to go look and see if we can dig up some more. One of what Sam's minuses with us was a lack of trees in sight, and so we're trying to hip that up a little bit. We had talked to, or Joe was going to set up a CPR training class for, well, I requested it, and she said she would like to set it up for anyone at City Hall who wanted to take it, so it would be a group thing. And so I'm asking that maybe someone could look into a CPR training class that we could take. I've had CPR training, but it's outdated by quite a ways, so. We had took in almost $1,000 in fiberwood sales. I, I know you had said something about not delivering, but we had twenty calls a night asking for wood to be delivered. They, they seemed to expect that it's going to be done, and I think if we didn't deliver wood, we would lose a lot of money. I would bet thirty percent. So I'm asking that we can deliver wood, so that we can please our guests. What else was there? Oh, I checked with, oh, come on. Miss, took ink printing place there by the, by the dollar store, Miss Dick.
Monster Inc.?
Yeah, Monster Inc. There we go. And for fifty magnets, ten cups, and twenty-five keychains, they quoted me $310. So I want to know if that could be approved or not. Other than that, I guess I have nothing else to add. Then you have to go with me?
I don't think she has to get approval because it's under the, can we change the rate? The amount?
Anything under 500, you didn't need approval.
Anything under 500, you don't need approval.
Okay, all right. They do, they do require payment in advance, so I'll have to get an invoice, and I'll give it to you, and... so they can be paid because they don't want to start work. And the reason it's higher than I would have thought is because they have to take the logo I have and add color to it. So they have to make a, a print of that, so.
Did you check with other places?
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a, what's that, what's that other one by Super One now?
Oh.
I don't know, there's Barber Graphics too, that's in there for...
There's a, I would get a couple more quotes, Wendy, because there's, there's, there's a couple in town in, in Virginia that do it.
Oh, okay.
There's one in the mall too.
Oh.
Yeah, there's, I forget the name of it, it's, used to be in the old liquor store, Super One, they're now, uh, shirt. They used to be in the mall.
Oh, now they're at the liquor store.
Now they're at the old liquor store at Super One South.
That's where I seen it.
Okay.
So I believe they're into that. It might be worth it, you might get it cheaper and...
Yeah.
Just to be fair to all of them, you know?
Yeah.
Bit on it.
Right. Okay.
Oh, on, on those tree planting, was there a discussion about trying to make a buffer next to that trail of, you know, bushes or something? Make a live fence out of bushes to kind of cut down on that dust and possibly a little noise, you know?
We did add one tree in there, but, um, you're talking about a, a, a long area.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that would be expensive.
Yeah, depending on what you did. I know you can get coney trees for fairly, they're not very big, but
No.
you could get them fairly cheap, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, I was just curious if there was a discussion about that.
Yeah, I know it was discussed.
Yeah.
But yeah, cost wise and could be.
Because I know, you know, your pine trees, they don't offer a lot of, you know, once they get big, there's few branches and not much protection from anything. Bushes, I know, are, you know, they're a little more privacy, you know, and you get because they, they get thicker and everything else, but whatever, I, I don't know where, what you guys are trying to do there besides a windbreak, but I don't know.
I could look at putting up bushes. Um, as long as I kept it under five hundred, I'd be okay.
Yeah.
And, and try to get some in there now, please.
Yeah, if it, you know, if it's still mowable, you know, you don't want to overdo it the, if you get one line, you know, you don't want to be driving around them, but
No.
but whatever, it's just a thought.
Do you mow right up to the trail?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's kind of where the line would be by the trail, so you could keep the dust from...
Where the trees are.
Of course, if you pave it, then you don't have a dust problem, so I don't know.
Yeah, well, I know they do spread that chemical on the trail, that helps out tremendously.
Yeah, it does.
So I just hate to see all that planting and then the ATVs, from my experience, don't typically stay on the trail. Yeah, so I'd hate to see all that go to waste with them running it over and...
We did have a little damage to a lot of the sites, um, because they were so wet, people were sinking in. So we've got a lot of repairing to do this week, so.
Oh, I'll bet.
Stayed anyway, I think.
What kind of material do you use to repair the ruts?
Oh, we just get dirt.
Class five?
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, I, it's, sure the ground's soaked.
Yeah.
Alright.
Anything else? Thank you.
No, thank you, Wendy. And any of the advisory boards? Nope. Uh, interim clerk?
I'll probably have to send a letter out this week, but realistically, all the bar owners who want to have a third of July permit, need to get that into the City Hall so it can be on our next council agenda, so you have time to get it done. Um, I don't know if you have historically sent them all letters, or if they just come in of their own accord, but I, when I was doing the fire department's one, I noticed that it, it is a thing, so I don't want anybody to not realize that it's timely and they have to get it into the cities. That's, that's it as far as I have. The library asked me to make some announcements, we put them on our, on our website, but on Thursday, June thirteenth at five P M, they have a comic stunt juggler. On Monday, July eighth at eleven A M, the Northern Lights Music Festival will perform, and on Thursday, July eleventh at six P M, they'll have the Peregrine Falcon researcher, researcher Jackie Fallon, who will be there with some of her live birds. Those were the announcements that I had.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the old business, wastewater treatment plant, Stan Tech update. Um, there's really nothing at this point to update, other than I believe Sam is working on getting more information to, uh, Attorney Lindsey. So that's, I believe they're still working on that. Any discussion on the wastewater treatment plant? And we'll move on to new business. We already approved the fire department D N R grant application for A, we'll move on to B, the resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, accepting donation, approved plumbing for the fire department, which we tabled from last council meeting, and since it's in the packet, I believe I don't have to read it.
I'll move.
I'll support it.
Moved by Counselor Pulis, supported by Counselor Skinsich, to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, accepting the amount of four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents donated by approved plumbing for the purchase of the fire truck. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And on to C, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, accepting donation from Saint Paul and Minnesota Foundation for the library.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Pulis, to accept a donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars from Saint Paul and Minnesota Foundation for general support for the library. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And on to D, Iron Range Half Marathon, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. They are looking for approval to use the Masabi Trail. My understanding, they contacted everybody along the trail for permission, and they just need our approval to use Masabi Trail for their marathon on August seventeenth of twenty twenty-four.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Pulis, to approve the Iron Range Half Marathon for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. And then we have the motion to direct the city attorney to look into the ownership of LOP's property to send out the appropriate letters.
Move. Support.
Moved by Counselor Pulis, supported by Counselor Skinsich. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. Do we have any miscellaneous? I have nothing to add, I just want to say I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day weekend, and it was memorable, and and survived the swamping weather that we had in the wind, but I was going to say that earlier, but I'll end tonight with that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Counselor Pulis.
I'll support it.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich, to adjourn our regular council meeting at six forty-nine P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. Motion carries four to zero.